I will now call the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Business Meeting to, uh, I will now...
Order.
That's the word. Those carmel's are going in my head, I'm telling you. Being held today, Tuesday, December 12th, 2017, at 6:30 PM at the Administration Building. And with no further ado, we'll all stand before the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are going to get the benefit of hearing from our fine arts programs tonight, and we're going to start with Levi Thompson. I think he has somewhat of an announcement for us, and then we will go to Roger Tyler and some of his members of the court.
If I could ask some of the board members to come up with me, we've got a somewhat big announcement like she said this year. I don't know, do you want to start or you want me to start?
Um, I can start. Go for it. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, three and a half years ago, my wife Susan and I joined the band boosters with the idea to help support the students of the Fayette County Band Programs. One of the main goals that the band boosters had even then was to raise enough money to buy new uniforms for the band. And now thanks to, in large part, to the Fayette County Foundation, the hard work of the students, parents, faculty of Connersville Schools, and support from the community, including Rips BBQ who gave us a big support. The board, led by myself, Darren Price, Tiffany Tuttle, and Font Struing, are happy to present a check for $21,144.09 to the school board for use in purchasing new uniforms.
I'd like to personally thank the band booster organization and the school board and the entire community of Fayette County for our support this school year and this fiscal year. We could not have made this dream a reality of making a new face for the band program without all of your support. With these new uniforms, we continue to seek out new members to grow our program in what it already has started to grow. And I believe with having these new nicer uniforms, I think it's going to do just that. So this will be the new face of the Connersville High School Marching Band and Spartan Guard of 2018. We thank you for your support and contributions and continued support for the rest of the school year.
Wow.
Awesome. Thank you. That's great.
And Mr. Tyler.
We have about three performances for you, and I'm going to let the students themselves introduce themselves. And we have a duet to start with, so. These are some numbers that we had in our Christmas show Sundays. What year are you in school also?
I'm Anna Moore, I'm a sophomore.
I'm Isaac Wolinski, I'm also a sophomore. I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know, where the treetops glisten and children listen, aren't here, sleigh bells in the snow, the snow. Said, "I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write. May your days, may your days, may your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white."
I am dreaming of a white Christmas, just like the ones I used to know, where the treetops glisten and children listen, see sleigh bells in the snow.
Oh, I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, with every Christmas card I write.
May your days, may your days, may your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white.
May your days be merry and bright, and may all your Christmases be white.
I'm Brenna Friend, and I'm a junior.
I'm Grace Bloom, and I'm a junior.
I'm Holly Sligo, and I'm a junior.
I'm Cecily Blowing, and I'm also a junior. Ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-a-ding. Dong, ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-dong. Ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-dong. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-dong. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, merrily the heavens sing. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, o'er the earth they ding-dong-ding. Ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-dong. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-dong. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, merrily the heavens sing. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, o'er the earth they ding-dong-ding. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, merrily the heavens sing. Merrily on high hear the bells ring, o'er the earth they ding-dong-ding. Ding-a-ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding-dong, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding, ding-a-ding. Merrily they ding-dong-ding.
I'm Cindy Parker, and I'm a junior.
I'm dreaming tonight of a place I love even more than I usually do. And although I know it's a long road, I promise you, I'll be home for Christmas. You can count on me. Tassels and mistletoe and presents under the tree. Christmas Eve will find me where the love I grieve. Christmas Eve will find me where the love I grieve. I'll be home for Christmas, if only in my dreams.
That was just fabulous. We get a little private choir concert. Thank you. You are now welcome to leave. You don't have to stay for the whole meeting. Go ahead. While they're dismissing, we'll go ahead and see if I can entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted or amended. Thank you. Can I hear a second? Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there any patron comments on agenda? I think none. I know that Scott wants to be in here for part of the consent agenda, but I'll just begin to go through the consent agenda that we will be approving tonight. The approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 11:14:17 and the special meeting of 11:28:17. The personnel report, which are retirements, resignations, leaves of absences, et cetera. The approval of the November 2017 claims number 48199 through 48503. Approval of year-end business office procedures. Appointment of Stephanie McCann to the Fayette County Area Planning Commission. I know we read she's replacing Brian Jennings, who served for a long time, or would be replacing. Permission to investigate the 2018 school bus purchased through state bid. Head Start enrollment guidelines. And lastly, donations. A donation of $2,500 from the Fayette County Foundation, a donation of $2,500 from the Connersville Area Swim Team, a donation of $5,000 from the American Heritage Realty, and 500 donation from Union Savings and Loan Association for the CHS Swim Team scoreboard and scoring system. A donation of $450 from the Kappa Kappa Sigma sorority for student needs in the elementary health clinics, and a donation of $4,000 from Nixon Tool Company for WCC's machine precision program. Scott, did you want to speak to any of the donations?
I just want to say, Ann, we have the band boosters contribution tonight. That's a lot of money going in to support our kids. And I shared some news from the Career Center for a grant that they are waiting to find out the exact amount, but it's going to substantially add some really good things to their program. But just the community support we have, Mr. Duncan and Daryl Drew, our swim coach, have worked with different folks in the community to get donations to replace that scoreboard and the whole system which needs replaced. So they are doing that out of the athletic funds and out of donations. So, and that's supposed to be installed over winter break, so that will be a great addition. And then with the band uniforms and our support that we're providing to help get that done. It's awesome. So I just want to thank all of the members.
Can I interject about that? Because we've not really talked about that. Indiana code allows for an equal match from the school corporation towards any donations received towards band uniforms. So we're prohibited from purchasing uniforms, but Levi and myself and Mr. Judd have had conversation about it and talked about, you know, when they were ready, when they made their donation, we would then use those general fund monies to match that. So their total cost that they just gave to me is about $42,800. So they will pay half, and then the school corporation will pay half also. So I can give you the code signing if you want. But, and it specifically, curiously enough, it only references band uniforms. It does not speak to quieter outfits. Yeah, so I find that interesting.
You always wonder where that's, you know, there had to be something that precipitated that specificity, you know, in there. I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the consent agenda, and I'm looking for a motion to approve. I still move. Thank you, Ann. Go here a second. I'll second that. Thank you, Lori. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the action items, beginning with the personnel report. Recommendations for employment, Mr. Serqua.
Thank you. Recommendations for employment for classified staff. Mina Hendrick as educational assistant at Connersville High School. Dawn Hughes, educational assistant, receptionist at Connersville High School. Also, you'll see a request for a salary adjustment for a market adjustment for speech language pathologists and psychologists. What we tried to do there is that in the additional information, you'll see that we put them on an index similar to what we did with the teacher's contract, so that they have an idea years down the road where they're at and what possible increases they will make. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, these are the recommendations for employment.
Thank you, Mr. Serqua. Can I entertain a motion, a motion for the personnel report?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mark. Do you want to hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Warren. Any discussion? I just want to say again, and I think we've discussed this at least the last two meetings, that this is an attempt by administration to rectify or make, or compensate employees we currently have to the fair market value. And I think the public needs to know the efforts that you all are making to make that happen, so I just wanted to acknowledge that. Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now to the approval of the 2018 school board meeting calendar, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packets, we sent out the calendar for 2018, and I highlighted a few of the dates that don't fall on the second Tuesday of the month. And one in particular was the July 17th meeting. And in talking with Janie and looking at wrapping up that end of school year budget due 30, it gives us an extra week to get that done. So hopefully she'll have all the information she needs to do that. So that's one change. And then with the other, we're starting a week later in January. We're only at one week later because of the holiday break and just getting everything ready for the packets a week prior to. So that's, those are the highlights of the calendar. Everything else is pretty much consistent with this year's.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the 2018 school board meeting calendar. Thank you, Andy. May I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lori. Any discussion?
What's the third month, Scott? That's different.
April. And that's, that's, hold on a second.
Traditional.
That's traditional to go that time as well with the NSBA.
That's right. Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now it's time for public comments. Persons wishing to make the board aware of suggestions, ideas, and or comments may address the board at this time. Comments which involve personnel or students must be discussed in private. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to report items. Superintendent's Discussion Groups Report. Principal Director Reports. Director of Human Resources Report.
Just one comment. I've, over the last couple of weeks, have caused to talk to several certified and classified personnel, and they would like to thank the board for the stipends that you approved at our last meeting, and they were able to receive at their last check. So they, several of them appreciate that.
Director of Finance Report.
Thank you, Mrs. Jacobs. I have a few items I'd like to share. Our partnership with Umba and Associates has really worked out nicely. They helped us with the bond issue. Obviously, we received a great interest rate on the bonds that we issued. In addition to that, their work as our investment advisor, we are saving a significant amount of money in advisor fees, and in addition to that, we're seeing interest rates of two to three times what we were receiving previously. Now, I know interest rates are going up, but they gather the quotes and send them to me, and there will be anywhere from five to seven banks on there. So they are actively pursuing good interest rates for us. So based on that, we have moved our continuing disclosure requirements, annual reporting to, it's called Emma, for the, our bond issue related items to Umba's services from Mino Accounting. We had a couple of staff oos that we had to sign documents, that we had not provided the most accurate information to Emma during the reporting periods with Mr. Mino. This isn't, it's not a lot of money for the services that they provide, so it doesn't require board action, but I wanted to let you know that that's another item that we are moving in 2018 to put with Umba and Associates Services. In addition to that, our annual insurance renewal just came in. It was on the bill list, but I wanted to point out that it was $510,000 this year. That's a drop from $529,000 last year. So we are experiencing some savings, particularly in our workers' compensation rate. We have safety, the safety committee actively works and does walkthroughs of the building. We remind our employees about wearing appropriate shoes in the winter and that sort of thing. So I think that that is paying off, our custodial and maintenance staff's efforts towards that. Our general liability and property did have a slight increase, but not very much. So it's nice to have a reduction for a change. The third item, we received a call today, and we will receive our tax settlement tomorrow. I'm able to pick it up. I just really want to compliment Jane at the auditor's office. She's done an outstanding job, and I'm not saying that previous auditors have it, but she's really embraced that role. And, you know, she's getting the money out a couple of weeks earlier than we've experienced previously. Last year, we got it, and I know for the school corporation, I really appreciate that because there's a lot of work we can do then for wrapping up the year and knowing the exact impact of the circuit breaker, in particular with our capital projects funds, because sometimes I have to move expenses from the, from capital projects into the rainy day because we have to end the year in the black. I can't leave a fund in the red. So I really appreciate her efforts. And our 2018 budget is in peer review right now, so I anticipate in the next week or 10 days, we'll be receiving our 1782 notice and knowing where we're going to start the year before we actually start the year. So that's a good thing. So that's from the finance department. Thank you.
Thank you, Janie. Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you, President and Board. Just a couple of highlights. Recently, Fayette County schools, in conjunction with Sani and WCC, attended the community festival that was held at Expo Hall. And I want to shout out to the Early College High School and Mr. Judd. They spent the evening talking about their program, and Sani had some great electrical things to play with, although we could not compete with Duke Energy, who brought the entire system, but we still had lots of excitement. Yeah, you know, there's always someone that topship. Also want to shout out to Swim Team and their pinkout and Mr. Collins for so graciously putting on a pink swim cap and jumping in the pool.
Does anybody have photographic images?
I have a video.
Okay.
I would be happy to share, along with Daryl Drew, Brent Duncan, Grady Tate, Jen Getz, Leah Fishman, they all went in the pool.
Grady went in the pool?
Yes. I have videos of everyone going in the pool. I'm just thankful that my name wasn't shouted and I didn't have to go in the pool. And they raised close to $3,600 and $4,000 in conjunction with Centerville. So it was a great night. The kids were pumped, we won, was just overall a great event for the American Cancer Society. So those are just two of the things I'd like to highlight that's happening.
Thank you. Thank you. Superintendent's Report, Scott.
She stole my swim team.
Well, next, I'll let you show your video next.
You know, I purposely invited the fine arts programs from the high school for this, this evening, and it worked out well that Levi could present this with some amazing parent supporters. And I just want to commend, I'm a big fine arts supporter, I believe. My kids benefited from programs, fine arts band and choir, and, you know, our commitment to those programs is very important to this board, I know, and to our administration. So we have, we have some really great teachers, and I want to recognize them from kindergarten all the way through the folks who support our kids and prepare them for the performances on Sunday. And I loved seeing the band students in there too with that last number. That was awesome. So I just want to commend them. And then also Levi, I told him before, but if you've been to a Spartan game, you've noticed the pep band is bringing in some fun music, the kids are having fun. I see those tubas dancing up there, and the drummers are up there dancing, but that means a lot. That really adds a lot to what I think is the best basketball venue in the state anyway. And so I just want to commend our fine arts teachers and the students who do some wonderful things and some great programs that I've already seen, and we know where to come. So it's going to be a busy next week and a half wrapping those up, but I just, we have some great folks doing great things with our kids, so.
Thank you, Scott. For the good of the cause.
I had the pleasure of attending. Head Start has what is called a giveaway day. They've had that for 20-some years, and I think it's a non-sanctioned type of thing. What a giveaway day is, it gives Head Start parents a chance to purchase Christmas gifts, et cetera, for, you know, for family, et cetera. And they use what they use, I remember when my wife brought this up, they use what they call funny money. Now, when my wife first explained to me, this is like 20-some years ago, and I was a, an officer, and I said, "You better explain what funny money is." Because I have a different interpretation. And what funny money is, how they earn this is that if these parents, you know, go that extra mile, if they read to their children, help them with their homework, you know, some motivational things, then they earn this money. And as we all know, a lot of our Head Start parents, they've, they've been through a lot. And sometimes they just need these extra motivational things. So that's how they earn this funny money. And I was talking to Lori today, and I said, "Lori, I know some great printers. So in the future, I can see your picture on a dollar bill." We could call it Lori's Loot or Bob's Bucks. You know, something beside this funny money, you know. And, you know, all year round, they collect these items. Some of them are new, because I've strong-armed the state police, and they buy items, brand new. And they buy some very, you know, some nice used things for a lot of these parents. And when I was there today, I asked a couple of these parents. I said, "What makes you keep coming back here?" And one of the things I heard numerous times is said that the people that are here, talking about the Head Start staff, are very nonjudgmental when we come in here. And I found that very interesting. And I took that as, you know, folks, we particularly, and you know where I'm coming from, and sometimes when we do things, particularly with our church groups, you have to be careful when we're, you know, when we're supposedly doing good work. We just have to remember where our folks, where our neediest are coming from. And we have to remember to love them and to lift them up and to maybe walk in their shoes. And I thought that was a very, very interesting line. And I said, "I have to remember that myself." But they had a great time. Kids were happy. They had food for them. And my back is out because my wife, she just has to make care and all kinds of stuff. You know, the Miller Building, but they had an excellent time. So folks, if you have never done it, you didn't, you know, I invite you to attend. It's called the Giveaway Day, and they have that every year. And so it's really cool.
Thank you, Chris.
I'd like to give a shout out to my favorite school, which is no surprise, CMS. They had their first soiree of the school year on a Friday night. And as an old student council sponsor for a long time, I asked where the money was going to go this year. And typically, it has gone to Riley Hospital, which is a very good place to send it. But the kids decided this year they wanted to give it locally. So the profits from that dance are going to the food bank. And they also have collected canned food and the like, but they're giving a monetary donation to, to the food bank. And I thought that, they said Riley's nice, and we realize a lot of people use it. But with all the publicity lately that the, that the food bank down in Indiana is so short on so many things, they decided that that's, that's what they wanted to do. And out of about 550 kids at the middle school now, there were 200 and, I think, 230 tickets sold. So I think that was a, that's what Tanya told me the other day. And I thought, "That's really great. That's about half of our kids that are participating in a, in a nice social event for, for all of them." It was a typical middle school dance. Nobody did anything for about the first hour. But after that, after, after that, it, it.
Once you got up there.
My spies told me it was, it was pretty cool. So, but I think that that's an idea that the students at the middle school level and the high school level, everybody is kind of getting into this sense of community. And, and it's nice to support things outside of the community, but charity really begins at home. And we have so many needy people here in Fayette County. And if we can help each other out, it just makes it a better place for everybody. So I was just real pleased with that, that they were doing. I don't know what the final monetary figure was, but that's where it was going.
Thank you, Ann. Mark?
Yeah, I want to give a shout out to the people that helped with the FFA farm. And I probably don't know everybody, but I know with the harvesting that Gary Groves came out and combined. I think it was Doug Beal that drove the grain truck for them. And I'm sure somebody planted, I don't know who that was. But I'm going to give a shout out to them, and that many stays with the FFA kids. So thank you for your help.
I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Levi Thompson and Roger Tyler and the rest of the music organizers, I guess, for all the Christmas programs.
Yeah.
That is a lot of organization. I went to Maple Woods last Monday, and that was very entertaining. And it's not easy to get a bunch of kindergartners to stay in one place. You know, first graders and all of them. But very well put together, very well organized, and that's a lot of hard work. So thank you for doing that.
I wanted to recognize, well, first of all, I don't know if we met since the big debut on CBS Sunday Morning. That was a wonderful piece on our food service program. Rachel did a great job. Everybody else that was, obviously Scott, was front and center. I know they spent the day and only could put a small portion. But boy, for as many of us that posted on Facebook and friends far away who were familiar with Connersville were saying, "Wow, you guys are really doing a great thing." So thank you, Scott, for, for all you do to support that, Ann, for spearheading or getting the crew to come out here. I saw something also today that we are now going to have an elementary cross-country team, or I guess a team or teams, yeah. Which I just think is fabulous, very exciting for the kids. I know they do one, they've typically done one cross-country meet at the end of the year, all the gym classes, but now this is going to be like a team or something.
Organized, right.
Yeah.
As well as wellness, and Kelly Flum is spearheading that, who is our wellness coordinator.
Yeah.
Really exciting to, to see this start, and we hope that'll grow.
Yeah, I think it'll be great. I bet we'll get a lot of kids involved. And that dovetails with my next comment. When Roger Tyler was giving his thanks towards the end of the program, the Christmas, the Christmas program, right before the finale, he wanted to recognize a number of people. And what I thought was particularly special is he named all the elementary and middle school music folks. And, you know, just like this elementary cross-country team, which will feed into, I think that there's definitely a sense of Fayette County School Corporation being a team and everybody working together, and, and we all share, and the kudos for that. So I, I appreciated him doing that just because it reminded me that, you know, he didn't just start with kids that had never sang a song before. They've been coming up the ranks, and we appreciate, we appreciate hearing about that. Anything else, anyone?
That's like, we're having a good year.
All right, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Andy. A second?
I'll second.
Any discussion about that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.